Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. My name is Pam Tricamo. It's my pleasure to introduce everybody this morning. We'd like to thank Matthew Top from the Lebanon Daily News, Laura LeBeau from Forever Lebanon Valley for joining us today. After the candidates speak, you will be allowed to ask questions. And please just raise your hand and we'll call on you to answer your questions. After the event, you're welcome to stay, take more pictures if you need them, take pictures with our candidates. And for your information, the press conference is being broadcast live on Facebook. And we encourage everyone out there to please share it with your family and friends to help us get the word out about our candidates. And now it's my pleasure to introduce you to the candidates for Lebanon County Commissioner and my friends, Joellen Litz and Cindy Barry-Dobbs.
Thank you so much, Pam. It was really nice of you. I'm going to talk a little bit about why I'm running again. And people have asked me, so I think it's a fair question. I'm going to start with something that should be on people's minds right now. How many of you remember Sandy Hook? So many people were devastated by that. And I'm talking here in Lebanon County. I actually had a school bus driver come to me and say, "What can you do as a county commissioner? You're my county commissioner, we have to do something." And so I thought about it. And what came to my mind was Candles Across Lebanon Valley. And this was in 2012, I think. So what we did was had Route 422. And I asked for points of light to coordinate different stations along Route 422. Sure enough, people stepped up to the plate. If I recall correctly, we had like, I don't know, I had it written down here, 75 points of light, places where people were holding candles. At Tosco's, Lebanon Valley Mall, all the way up through. And sometimes it was just two or three, and sometimes it was 100 or more. So the Bosco's was the center. And we all were together. And what I saw was Lebanon County in action during a time of crisis, during a time when people were hurting and needed a way to have an outlet and express themselves. That was so moving, so touching, so memorable, that as a county commissioner, people responded. Then there was another thing that happened. And if I can find all of my props. This one dealt with education. Let everybody see my spotted lantern fly swatter. I had people saying, "What is this bug? It's so beautiful." And, "Oh, don't hurt it." Well, the exact opposite had to be done. So there had to be education, and it had to be immediate. So we had spotted lantern flies coming to Lebanon County from Berks County. And eventually I came to the realization that we need to have an army of people working together to kill these lantern flies. Businesses were calling me, and I actually went out to some with the bottles and was able to help them and educate them how to catch them with bottles. That's a lot quicker, or how to spray. But the fly swatter for a home was the key. And I got to tell you that my partner in crime here, Cindy, was one of the deputy spotted lantern fly killers. And she was phenomenal at it, one of many. I'm telling you, again, there were like 100 people that coordinated killing of flies. And I even had a boy scout who trained a troop based on the information. Now, Penn State, I don't want to cut them short. Penn State actually got their education together. But in the beginning, welcome. But in the beginning, the education was very minimal. And we had to do something. So again, as a commissioner, I was able to be creative and use that part of me that a lot of people don't see and to motivate people to help. And again, it wasn't me, it was the community responding. So my tenure has not been about me, but about inspiring others to be part of a solution, not part of the problem. And then, of course, the third thing I'm going to talk about is the fact that a pandemic hit called the coronavirus. And it was like people were struggling and they were scared to go out at all. And yet we had people who were on the front lines. And they were struggling with, "Do I respond to this fire? Do I take my ambulance and go?" There was no PPE, that's a personal protective equipment. Thank you, Laura. And I was trying to think, "What does it stand for? It's equipment." But there was none available. 81 seamstresses came together. And I can't take, again, I can't take the credit for this stuff because it wasn't me doing it. Did I help? Absolutely. But 81 seamstresses made 10,000 masks. And we got them in the hands of our first responders. All the firemen, policemen, whoever asked, we gave them away. People were so generous in the public. They were able to donate supplies. We kept running out of elastic, couldn't buy elastic. And we had people coming to the rescue with the elastic. We had people crocheting little chains so we could use those there for a while. But we kept sewing. It was, you know, we were driven. I don't know how else to say. And then finally, you have to get to a point where you realize, okay, this is enough. We were so, so privileged because Senator Casey took notice to what we were doing. And he did a conference call with half a dozen of us. So again, this is neighbors helping neighbors. This is Lebanon County. We are a good county. We're small enough to care about each other. But we're big enough to do a lot, from the rail trail to preserving Camp Shan. There was Governor Dick, you name it. And so, of course, my passion, one of my passions is long-term projects that are going to benefit the next generation and be around long after I'm gone. So those are the projects I really dig into. But I guess I'd like to conclude with, God's not finished with me yet. And He does have a drive in me and a vision in me to continue one more term. Because one of the things I thought would get done, but instead the pandemic hit, was that rail trail. I would really like to finish it. I've been doing it a long time, the whole time I've been in office, in fact. But I'd like to be here for the conclusion of that. I also know that our comprehensive plan is probably 17 years old. And it's really time to renew that. Everything we said, here's where the development should go, that sort of thing, infrastructure, well, guess what? It's pretty much absorbed. And so now people are buying up our farms. And there are some that have better soils and some that have marginal soils. So we have to help guide the development so we aren't losing all of our crockery because we are the breadbasket of America. Lebanon County has some of the most fertile soil, not just in the state of Pennsylvania, but in the whole United States. So here we are. And it's 2023, and it's time to make a decision. And that decision, so many people have stopped me, is, "Please, please run again." And like I said, I thought about it and I thought, not for me, but for the people. They are the ones who are doing the encouraging. They are the ones who respond when there is a crisis, whether it's communicating through Facebook or on YouTube and showing us times of crisis. You know, these are just certain examples. But when there was flooding, and I can, I'll never forget, I won't say her name because I didn't ask permission, but there was a woman who was stranded at the top of her driveway in her car, widowed, all alone. She couldn't get out. Her house was flooded, the streets were flooded. She's following my Facebook posts. I had no idea about, you know, unplug, turn off your electricity in the basement so you don't have shorts going on, that sort of thing. And so these are, and I can't even remember all the conversations. But she was so grateful, and I am so grateful. And when I hear people with the, they have passion too. They say, "Please, just one more term gets through this." And so the farmland preservation, again, finishing the rail trail and that comprehensive plan, these are all things I would like to accomplish. I usually try and set three goals for the new term. Those are it. And I have already reached out to the state partners, DCNR, DEP, Penda, the Economic Development Corporation. I can't remember all of the titles of the state agencies. But I've reached out to them and said, "Look, we're using our money that we received. We did cares, went to the community. But then we had to stop and take in some more money, which was really great because it came to Lebanon County. But the ARPA funds went for public safety." I had been lobbying for a new 911 center for a long time, an awful long time. It's finally happening. And I am so grateful that my colleagues have come together so that we could get this done. Again, it's never me taking credit for the whole shebang because it's not that way. Ideas, maybe. But the bottom line is, we have this 911 center. It's going to get done this year. And then we will again have a backup plan. It's called continuity of operation. Since Senator Haven was sold, we haven't had one. We need to be able to move our courts or any other essential offices into a place where they can operate that has backup generators and all the things that are necessary in case it's tornadoes or whatever. It's a hard new facility. Was it cheap to build? Absolutely not. But it will, again, benefit us into the future. These are the kinds of things that we can accomplish together. Not one person alone, it takes a team. And again, I'm just so thankful and grateful for the opportunity to have served you and hopefully to serve you one more term as your county commissioner. Thank you.
And thank you, Joellen, for teaching me all about lantern flies. I consider myself a pro at catching lantern flies, thanks to you. Not only is the fly swatter effective, but also a bottle with just a little bit of alcohol and you can catch them and they go right in, it's awesome. But so I really do appreciate her educating us about lantern flies because I did have lots of lantern flies. Even though I don't have trees, I somehow had lantern flies. But yeah, I appreciate everything that she has taught me and others about lantern flies. So you might ask, "Why am I running for county commissioner?" And the reason is, in 2018, I joined the Lebanon County Democratic Committee because I wanted to be part of the solution. I wanted to stop complaining. And I kept hearing, "It starts local, we need to start local." So, and this is an opportunity because the county commissioner position is up for election this year. So that's why. I also, one of the reasons why I think I would be good at it is because I'm a people person. I have, I was a teacher. I'm a retired teacher. And I've, you know, worked with students, of course, and their parents from all different backgrounds. And I just, I love working with people. I also went around and got petitions signed by people, you know, knocking on doors and met a lot of people and just really enjoyed meeting all kinds of people. If they answered their door, it was always nice. I also register voters. So I've been all over Lebanon County knocking on doors, registering voters. I've been to all parts of the city, north, south, east, west. And I really enjoy people. And as a county commissioner, I would be looking forward to listening to people and understanding their concerns. And so another thing that qualifies me, I think, is my experience. I do have experience in business. Not only was I a teacher, I worked in business for San Giorgio Macaroni. I worked as a computer operator programmer and worked in the accounts receivable and accounts payable departments. And I took three accounting courses. So I have my bachelor's degree in science and education and psychology, which is another reason why I like people. And I consider myself, even though I'm a people person, which is kind of like creative, I'm also kind of like left-brained. I like spreadsheets and stuff like that. I do my own budgeting. So I do have, I like business and I do have experience with business. I also worked for the YMCA. I managed, I was the co-aquatic director. I was co because the other co-aquatic director was a mom. So we were two moms doing one job. I was in charge of swim instructors and lifeguards. So I managed them and trained them. So those are the reasons why I am qualified. Of course, I'm passionate. I would like to tell you what I'm passionate about. Of course, I'm passionate about public education with my BS in education. I'm passionate about early education and Head Start. And WEPA, oh my gosh, what's WEPA? WEPA is... Working to empower people for advancement. I think that's something that Lebanon County could really use to help people, to educate people and to help them get jobs and create businesses. So I would do everything I can to help in that area. Also with my, I also have a master's in science education. So I am passionate about the environment. I am so thankful for Rails to Trails in our backyard. We are so lucky. And I would like to work with Joellen and, you know, continue that job and help in that area. And, I'm using a lot of "and." Another thing that I am passionate about, another reason why I want to get involved is because county commissioners are in charge of elections. And I am passionate about mail-in ballots. So I would just like to take an opportunity in closing about, to educate about the mail-in ballots. The outside ballot, you don't sign the actual ballot. I was surprised about that. You have to sign the envelope. Then you have to date it. I helped count mail-in ballots since 2020, in 2021, 22. There were so many people that didn't date it. And we had to set those ballots aside. It's a very, it's a very good process. Not just anybody's ballot is going to be counted. If that date isn't on there, it's subjected to scrutiny. The other thing I would like to mention is the inside ballot. Lots of times, the privacy ballot is inside the, this envelope. Lots of times, this envelope is missing and we can't, we can't count the ballot. Lots of times, people get so, they want to be so perfect. They also sign this, "We can't accept any kind of writing. If any kind of writing is on the privacy ballot, we can't accept it." And it gets scrutinized by the county commissioners. Any kind of writing on here, it can't be counted. So please be careful with your mail-in ballots. And that's all I have to say.
Do you want to ask if you have any questions?
Okay, thank you, Joellen and Cindy, for sharing your views for the future with us. Does anybody have any questions for either of them? Laura, you're shaking your head. Okay, don't fight, somebody ask your question.
Well, I think the first question I would like to ask, I have a few. But you announced that you two are running as a team, essentially. What's that going to look like? How's that going to work? Because let's be real here. The practical reality is that likely when the final election shakes out, it's going to be two majority commissioners and likely they will be Republicans. And there's only going to be one Democrat on the council. I know that in the past, I don't remember what year it was, but there were two Democrats, but it was a long time ago. So how are you going to campaign and strategize with this practical reality of Lebanon County?
My question, okay. We have, we have an agreement. If she looks at me, it's mine. But if she thinks she can handle it, she's, I say, handle it. If she wants to take the lead, I'll follow her. It's not a hard thing to think about. It's about two people working together for the good of the community. You know what? Cindy has experience with elections, whether it's going door-to-door or working booths because there are booths like the fair, London Area Fair. There are downtown Anvil, Old Anvil Days. There are numerous events. I would love to have somebody who I can get along with to work those things and do the door-to-door. And I know Pam's good at door-to-door, so many people are. Again, it can't be just the two of us. But it's nice to have somebody we can bounce things off of each other, questions or, you know, potential future things. I don't even know what they could be at this point. But the point is, having someone you can work with. No one else told me they're definitely running for county commissioner. So I went on a recruiting thing. And Cindy did come to mind for many of the reasons she has already explained. We worked together with the lantern flies and also she, I...
LVC?
Yeah, we both went to LVC. I have observed her helping to count the ballots, the mail-in ballots. So I could see her passion, I could see her diligence. And she shows up, you know, that sort of thing. Showing up is so important. And I thought, I think there's a kindred spirit here. And I think, you know, the good Lord has given us all different talents, each one of us. Some people can sing, some people can't, I admit it. But we all have different talents. And again, going back to my initial response or presentation, I couldn't think what my talent was because I'm like, I was thinking like music and art and that sort of thing. And I'm thinking, "Lord, you didn't give me a specific talent. I feel like a jack-of-all-trades." And then I realized, "Oh, my goodness." What He has given me is the ability to respond in a time of crisis, to help people when they need help and to not interfere otherwise, but to bring them together, to have people working together and then, you know, letting them take ownership, helping them to take ownership and get the job done. And again, I gave you several examples. But all of a sudden, just this week, I swear, because I always question, "Lord, what is my God-given talent? I don't know what it is." And it just dawned on me. It is really when people are in times of crisis, I get calls or people stop me and I'm able to come up with something that makes sense, that we can try. And never, not everybody has to agree with it, not everybody has to get involved. But what happens is, they either show up, like Cindy did, and they become part of the solution. Or they could say a prayer, you know, even if they're at home praying. Or, as so many of the businesses did, they can donate finances to make it happen. But it's a matter of everybody working together as a community. And so again, in these times, I see Cindy. And so I'm thinking, you know what? I think we could, we could be a team. And so I asked her, and we sat down a couple times and had some conversations. I answered her questions and lo and behold, she said yes. So here we are. Did I answer that okay?
Yes, very good.
Okay.
Well, if I can redirect, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Normally in elective politics, when you're announcing that you're part of a slate of candidates, it's with the idea that the team, the slate, is going to assume office. Again, are you operating, I mean, with all due respect, you cast a very large shadow, Joellen. Because you have been in office for so long, everybody knows you, respects you, knows the work that you have done in service to the community and the people of the community. And so there is a natural inclination to say, "Joellen, absolutely." But with Cindy, I mean, are you going to try to become, to take over the majority in the county commission? Is that your, are you operating with that as your goal so that you can both have a seat on commission?
I admire your persistence, Laura. I thought I answered the question, but let's see if I can hone this down a little bit.
Well, I'm asking, what I'm asking is, it's three seats. Right now, two are Republican, one is Democrat.
Yes.
The election could come and the majority could switch. And it could be two Democrats, one Republican.
And it happened one time in our history.
It happened one time before, yes, in the 90s. But is that, is that how you are tailoring this campaign? So that you can retake that?
Anything can happen. It's not in our hands, it's in the people's hands, it's in the Lord's hands. It has been happened once before in Lebanon County. Who's to say it can't happen again? We should not be pessimistic, we should be optimistic. And we should just run our campaign, we should have a good time, we should involve all the people we can. And it's in their hands. We will know on Election Day if you're going to have two Democrats for the second time in this county. We just keep plugging away, we don't give up. We don't fold our tent and go home. We're in the game and we're in it to win it.
Yeah.
Just, there are three commissioners. So refresh my memory, how long are the terms? And how does one get elected? Is it the three top vote-getters?
Yes.
Okay, so how long's the term?
She can answer this.
So there's three county commissioners. And the top three highest amount wins. And on each ballot, there's, the Republicans can have two candidates and the Democrats can have two candidates. But the top three mixed together are the county commissioners. And usually it's been two Republicans and one Democrat. But not always and forever. And why does it have to be always and forever?
It doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
And how long's the term?
Oh, four years, sorry.
So it's a four-year term?
Yes.
Well, that's the life, I think it's worth a shot. I mean, it's a good thing to do and I agree with Laura. You do cast a long shadow, your service to the county is tremendous. Service clubs, you're in every event that's open to the public, you really are. So I admire that. And you're very available. You've been available to me for comments and things, so I appreciate that. So we'll trust that the three best people get elected.
And I do truly admire Joellen too. I've seen her organize the Swetara Creek Cleanup the first weekend in May. And she's always posting things on Facebook. And she taught us how to get rid of lantern flies, even though I had to teach my nephew. I, my five-year-old nephew was killing lantern flies at my house, but I had to teach him not to kill all bugs. But I digress. But so Joellen, I do really, really, really admire her and think that she is here for the people. And I am a people person and I love people and I want to hear from people. And so I think we would work really well together. And I'm flattered that she asked me to run with her.
Yes. And you know, I will just add this to the mix. I think it's in two counties in Pennsylvania. There are or were three Republicans, which is not supposed to be. And if no one, you know, tells me they're running... And if no one, you know, tells me they're running, I don't want to leave that to chance, to leave an open seat. Because if there is a division on the Republican side, they're going to look to the Democratic side and write themselves in. When Republicans write themselves in, they could be very popular. They could beat me. There's a lot more Republicans than Democrats. And so, the strategy that was used in other counties could come to Lebanon County, and you could end up not having a Democrat on the ticket at all. And that would break my heart. This is a two-party system. I have been working this a long time, from the League of Women Voters, you know, all the way through. I served as Chair of the Democratic Party for a couple of years. And then eventually was encouraged to run for Commissioner. And so I have been doing that. I was out of term. My mother was quite ill, and I had to appear her needs, running her to appointments and all that sort of thing. You know, and again, I truly believe there's a bigger something. And I think that something is God, but everybody thinks different. But the bottom line is, never say never. Because when I lost that second time, I was crushed not knowing that my mother was going to need me. And I was able to devote, I had my business to run, but I was able to devote a lot of time to her. And we got closer in those last years than we had ever been in our lives. She was in and out of the hospital most of the time while I was growing up, and I had a hand in raising my siblings, so, you know, I've always had a lot of responsibility. And again, times of crisis, you get motivated, so. I think we can keep doing this, and it'd be nice to have Cindy by my side. And we just ask the voters to take a serious look at us. And again, part of our strategy, and it's no secret, because I just told you, is to make sure we do have Democrats, a Democrat elected on November. Thank you.
Matthew, you had a question?
Yeah. You're talking about, you know, trying to get that Democratic majority in there. You're gonna have to reach out to a whole lot of different groups. Do you have a plan in the next coming weeks and months to reach out to those groups?
We have a plan to be visible. We have a plan to be approachable. We have a plan to be putting people above politics. And I think that this is our plan, very basic as it is. Of course, we need you, the press, to cover us equally, which you do. You guys are so great, along with the Republican Party. But we also need other Democrats to promote us as well. People talking about the election and the campaign in a positive manner, in a supportive manner, is what is going to make it happen. I think that we just have to have, be shining lights in our community, and people will take notice. There's always a light that will brighten the whole room even when it's dark.
I would like to ask a question about the County Comprehensive Plan. I remember early on in my tenure here at WLBR, when the first, when the last one was done and authorized and everything. You're right, it's been a long time, and it's probably well overdue. I'd like to know from each of you, Cindy and Joellen, what concerns have you moving forward with the county in terms of its development that you would like to see addressed in the County Comprehensive Plan?
Um, okay. So, I'm sure I have a lot to learn, but I know what the county is just getting into is the WEPA and getting people educated. So I think that should be part of the plan. And protecting the environment and going on with the Rails to Trails. I'm not sure what all is involved in the Comprehensive Plan, but I love to learn, and I am also here to learn, so. And I, Joellen mentioned saving farms. I think I would be wanting to do that. So, take it away, Joellen.
Well, you know, one of the biggest things I have always been passionate about is the water issue. You only have so much water. Out West, they were in droughts. I mean, the rivers are drying up. They can't grow crops. Again, that's why it's so important for us to remain the breadbasket of America. Along with the open space to recharge the groundwater, which the farms supply, we have to be looking at our streams and making sure they're not drying up. Luckily, because we do have a fairly regular rainfall, we don't have a lot of irrigation in this area siphoning off the water. But our water companies, there is, of course, the Lebanon Water Authority, which services most of Lebanon County, but not all. But then we also have American Water Company. And then there's one, and they keep getting bought, so I'm not quite sure. Suez, I don't know if they still do or not. But they're down around Middletown, Hummels Town area, down that way. But three drawing from the Swetara Creek. That water is the lifeblood of this nation, of the nation, of course, but this community. Without clean water, an adequate supply of clean water to drink and grow crops, you know, it's going to be like nomads. Everybody's gonna have to pick up and move to where the water is. We can't let that happen. We have to teach people that, you know, all these warehouses that are going in, for heaven's sakes, install cisterns. The old barns used to do it. Get that groundwater, and if it's used to water your shrubbery or wash your vehicles, it's gray water. It can't be drank, used for drinking. But you can reuse that water and then let it go back into the ground in your area from where it came. To me, it just makes common sense. And the reason this is so important is that businesses are always looking for a way to save money. Water costs money. So does sewage. If you can collect the water for free off of your roof and reuse it, why the heck not? It makes economic sense as well as good sense for the environment. So, these are the things that can also be addressed in that Comprehensive Plan, encouraging people to install cisterns. Now, at a home, they might just do a rain barrel. But a big business with those big roofs, especially those warehouses, they can do a lot of good for the community if they capture that water.
How concerned are you about the explosion of these warehouse fulfillment centers vis-à-vis the roads, road safety, and these tractor trailers on our narrow streets? You know, the city of Lebanon is doing a fantastic job repaving the main arterials. Mayor Capello has been transformative in that regard. But I fear that those giant tractor trailers loaded down with merchandise are just gonna wear grooves in that nice smooth pavement, so. You know, that is an issue for me as a mother with a child who's a year away from getting her license. Being on the road with these tractor trailers, it's a concern with regard to the narrowness of our roads that were never intended for any, let alone the volume that we now have. That's a real issue to me as a citizen. I follow it as a reporter. What's your thought on that?
Well, I do like to see the new warehouse, the Walmart Warehouse off of North 72. They were responsible for widening the road and putting in a red light and a warning for the red light. I think they did a really good job. And it also looks like they have to collect the water. So I think making the business responsible for making the roads better and safe is a good thing.
Laura's right. We're not building new roads. That has gone by the wayside. One, it's very expensive. Two, eminent domain was involved in taking people's homes and businesses. That was very unpopular. But there's so many reasons that we're not building, we're out of the mud. The initial impetus for roads was to get the farmers out of the mud and get the goods to where they needed to go. Because the railroad could only stay on their track. And even before that, the canal boats came down along the Swetara Creek. So by having our old roads, their bases are not made for these big trucks. So they have to contribute with their fuel tax to help us to repair those roads. That is why we have liquid fuels at the county, and we disseminate money to the different municipalities to help them with their projects. It is very important that we continue to do that, and of course, it's gonna take more money. And with electric vehicles coming, there's also maybe a new way to raise that money to repair those roads. Municipalities are responsible for the repair of their roads in their township. The state is responsible for the highways, I'll say. They are Route 422 and 72, but not through the city of Lebanon. I was at an MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, meeting way long ago. And I heard, and my colleagues were new, I don't know if the mayor was new at that time, but I heard the one man say they're having a grant program whereby you could qualify for getting roads redone. He perked my interest, and I said, "Excuse me, sir, but could we get money for state roads that go through us that the state no longer owns?" And he thought about it, he looked at his colleagues, and they shook their heads, "Yes." I said, "Mayor, you want to get with them?" So, we were very fortunate to find that window of opportunity to be able to help the city get the funds they need to redo 422 and 72. Because the big trucks will use the major arteries the most. But when they meander on back roads, I believe we should have truck routes very, very well-marked so that those roads get priority for repair with the liquid fuels dollars, because I know those bases are going to break up. And then, like, I live in West London, and they're not supposed to come down Lehman Street in West London. They have to go around on Union Canal Drive to get over to the business park. You would be surprised how many get pulled over because they're breaking the law by going through West London. We're trying to protect our roads so they don't break up. And there's a lot of trucks, okay? So, it's a matter of enforcement with the local police or the state police and making sure trucks are following the rules and the routes. Because if they don't, we're gonna have bigger problems. And as for safety, I'm gonna share, you know, I can't help, that's this little educator. When you have a big truck, I used to hate following big trucks because I couldn't see anything, and it just drove me nuts. I'm like, "Why all these big trucks?" And my husband at one time was a truck driver, and he said, "Ah, but if you're behind a truck, you can be guaranteed you're gonna be able to stop. If you're in front of it and you make a short stop, he might not be able to stop and run right over you." So I've got a whole new attitude on trucks. I'd rather be behind them now than in front of them. And, but that's just, you know, mother, your daughter's getting on the road. You want to teach her something, might be useful. Don't get upset when you're behind a big truck. You're safer there. So, I know we have a lot of trucks. We can't stop that. And they are paying for their gasoline, and they're paying those taxes that help to repair those roads. We just have to be diligent and make sure they're following the rules to protect our roads for the townships and boroughs and the city.
Yeah, and the other thing about big trucks is, when they're making, is it a right-hand turn?
They swing left.
We need to be back, and it used to make me angry. I used to like, I don't, why do I have to move back? Just because, because you have to turn. Well, my husband was a truck driver, too. And he educated me on that, and it really makes sense. They simply need more room to turn. So again, education, educating people. I don't know if we need bigger signs. I know in the back of some trucks, it says "Wide Turns" or, so of course, I'm a big proponent of education.
Wanted to ask, do you guys have any plans for any of the housing issues around here? I know we have various people looking for houses, but also a lot of people still being put on wait lists for renting property. So do you have any plans that you want to address for that?
I think this one is mine. Actually, today is Tuesday. Tomorrow, we will be at a dedication for Community Homes of Lebanon Valley, because the commissioners helped to fund a new housing development for low-income. And we have lots, all the terraces are run by community homes, whether it's Willow Terrace, Oak Terrace, Cockle Terrace. And they have boards, local people, who look at increasing low-income housing. And then we also have, of course, our Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And they have Washington Arms and Stevens Towers, places like that. So we have two arms. One is a more or less nonprofit group, and they come to us for some of our housing money. I think it's Act 137. I hope I got the right number. The act numbers, I get mixed up sometimes. But we have a pool of money that, when housing is being proposed, we can help fund. And what we usually do, and we also have Habitat for Humanity. They've been big in rehabbing old housing stock. Somebody has a fire or something, they're thinking, "I don't have the money to rebuild this," or whatever. Or, "I can't wait for it to get done, but I'm going to go get a new place." Well, they can donate it to Habitat, and they'll bring it around. We had three down here on Carmeloon Street. Again, the commissioners helped to fund that. So we do have opportunity to make improvements in our housing. We also have a housing study going on. I'm trying to think who all's involved. There's, there's several groups have come together, and they are completing a housing study for us. And so that will make sure that we, again, just like the Comprehensive Plan, this can become part of our Comprehensive Plan. And we will have an idea where this should be placed. Like, who would have thought to put one out in the Fredericksburg area? But Scott Seckler came in and said, "Hey, I have my chicken plants here. I mean, workers, they can't find housing." And so he promoted putting in a place out there, and sure enough, it's going well. And it's a very nice place, so. We need that Comprehensive Plan to make good decisions about where to locate it. And then we have all these groups that are working on making housing more available and affordable, because that's the low-income in, but the developers are coming in from Lancaster and different places, and they're taking up all the farmland. And that's where we have to have that balance, by preserving farmland and not letting it all go for, you know, $300,000 homes. There's nothing wrong with those, except we have to make sure they're going in the right place and that we're also taking care of the low-income as well. Hope that makes sense.
And I would just like to add, there is a, there's a program for rent rebate and, oh, and property tax rebate. I, my mom couldn't keep her house as, when she was older, because she couldn't afford property taxes. So, there is a rebate for property taxes, and supposedly, now, this is the state legislature has to make this happen, but supposedly, the income is going up higher so that more seniors will be able to pay their taxes or have help paying their taxes. So, hopefully that will help, too.
Good point.
Anyone else? Okay.
Just one thing, on that Comprehensive Plan, given the fact that, and it's regarding voting, as a Democratic, you know, ideal, I mean, that's what our whole system is based on, and the protection of that voting should somehow be addressed in the Comprehensive Plan to kind of offset any future malcontent candidates who can just, you know, lawsuit us to death, if you will, by, you know, we've seen it happen in the country. Fortunately, Lebanon County's avoided all of that. We had, at Rotary, we had the Commissioner who's in charge, or not the Commissioner, the person who's in charge of voting. And that came up, you know, and he said, "There is no evidence that there's any trickery, fraud, or anything going on. Everything's above board." And with the way he described handling the mail-in ballots, certainly a schrist of that, but I don't have a suggestion, but I would suggest that we find a way to protect and shrine the voting rights of all citizens. And the mail-in ballot is definitely one of them. Because, you know, I mean, the alternate side attacks that all the time, because it's predominantly Democrats who use it. People who can't get out, maybe lower-income, don't have a car, don't have a way to get to the polling place. I think we should make it easier for people to vote, certainly not harder for people to vote.
Exactly.
Exactly.
You know, and even, you know, what was the state? They weren't allowed to give water to people waiting on line?
Georgia.
I mean, come on. So some way to kind of nip that in the bud. And that, you know what? It scares people off. I imagine there's people down there that said, you know what? I don't need that stress, you know, so I'm not even gonna bother to vote. That's what we don't want.
Well, Tom, I have to try and do this delicately, because I hear your passion. As commissioners, when we are not running for office, and that happens at the time you file your petition and you become an official candidate, we sit as the election board. And as the election board, we have to follow the rules given to us by the state. Those rules sometimes might not make sense to us, but the rules are the rules, and we have to follow those. So I'm going to switch now to a little bit broader perspective, in that I had been, 2012, I think, Chair of the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. And when we're in those positions, and I retain my seat on the board because of that position, so I had some influence, at least a vote, on the board as to what we lobby for. And all the commissioners, we have a big voting thing, where every commissioner's vote counts, to decide what our top issues are. Of course, elections is way up there. And then we say, we just need more time to process the ballots. Let us start, you know, a little bit before, so we're not trying to do everything all in one day. It's a really big demand on us. But we have been reaching that bar, we have been getting it done, but we're continuing to grow. So some of the things you suggest are great, but I would respectfully suggest that as county commissioners across the state, we come together, and we are lobbying the state constantly through our president, not president, I'm trying to think, our CEO, there we go, that's probably what I'm looking for, and Lisa. And she has a connection to Lebanon County. She also graduated from Lebanon Valley College. So through her, she's, you know, in charge of all the employees up there, and then Brenda Piniak is her right hand. And then we have a lobbying team of, I think, three people, and they go to the hills, and they say, look, the commissioners have these top priorities, and here's what they're saying they would like, and it's our way to participate in getting what you're asking for. I don't know that the comprehensive plan would have room for that. I may be wrong, maybe I learned something new here. But we actively must be a part of the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, where our voice can be heard, and we have a lobbying arm to try and influence the state legislators to do what's right for our counties.
Yeah, and mail-in balloting is bipartisan. It benefits Republicans as well as Democrats. And Republicans were the first ones to pass the mail-in balloting in Pennsylvania. So, and then, I don't know what happened, misinformation, and people think that people can just stuff the boxes and the vote, and the ballots get counted, and that's just not true. So we, again, big proponent of education, we need to educate people and properly inform people that each ballot in that box gets matched to the person, and the signature gets verified. And then, if they don't have a date on the outside envelope, it gets tossed aside, or if it doesn't have a privacy envelope, it gets tossed, or if there's writing on the privacy ballot, it gets tossed. So we need education and proper, not misinformation. People are so misinformed about that.
One of the things I would like to see changed, and this is just me, I'm not speaking for the association right now, but there are usually three, at least three dates on an envelope. And the first one might be the date the person is filling in the ballot, and then there's one that comes, if it comes by mail, that the post office puts on it. But the one that really matters is the one when it comes into our office, and the election staff at the county runs it into our meter that dates and timestamp stamps it. If it's in the office before the deadline, date and timestamp by the county, my humble opinion is, that's the date that should count. Because that's the one, the other two do not tell you when it arrived at the county, that it was there by the deadline. That date and timestamp does. I'd like to see the law changed to allow that. Some of the courts have ruled that way. I don't know where it stands right now. It's a constant battle. It's getting appealed here and there. I have to check and see what it is. And I won't be on the election board this time, but I follow it pretty closely, but it changes so quickly that I don't know where it stands right now.
Who will be the election board? The judges?
Well, traditionally, the judges either are or appoint who is on the election board. And I will tell you, not only is that going to be a very responsible job, but it's gonna be somebody that has to know something about election law. So at the very least, I would suggest an attorney, but I'm, the judges make the appointments. Some counties, the judges ask the commissioners who they would like appointed. I've never been asked that. So, you know, that way, I guess it's totally independent. But whoever the, I mean, I've seen some of the district judges get tapped to fill that role, as well as, like, John Feather is an attorney, he was tapped already. And the judges themselves will actually rotate, and that way, they understand, so when issues come up in their courtroom, they at least have some working knowledge of what goes on. That's a big educational process, but without the law. And I can tell you, at this last election, there were issues going on. I'm like, how can that be? So the governor's office actually called me and said, do you need anything? I said, yeah, I need something in layman's terms, the most recent rulings, or whatever, of where the law stands in this, because like I said, things were changing up till the last minute. And sure enough, Megan sent me a PDF file. I opened it, I read down through, I found three violations, and I kept Matt informed, our chairman, and others. I think our vice chairman was there in the room, so I was able to keep her informed as well. But I'm like, you can't have somebody that's a novice on the election board. It has to be somebody that can either get those answers or know that law. It's a very important position when it comes to elections, to make sure they continue to be fair and impartial, and that we are not, you know, putting any shadows on the election whatsoever.
If there's no other questions, thank you very much for joining us today. Don't forget to vote.